Thank you. Nancy is here as well.
This conference will now be recorded.
So, okay. I'm glad to begin, as I have been, by acknowledging that Benton County is located within the traditional homelands of Mary's River or on Penequa Band of Calipria and the Muddy Creek or Chimaco Band of Calipria. These peoples were forcibly removed under the Willamette Valley Treaty of 1855, but they're still with us as part of the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ronde and the Confederated Tribes of Soletts. Moving on to introductions, I'm Suzanne Ogieroux, Chair.
Hello, Commissioner.
Nancy Wyers, Commissioner and Vice Chair.
Vance Gruney, County Council.
Gary Stockoff, Public Works.
Lynn McKee, Director, Natural Area Parks Event.
Trucef Arley, Board of Commissioner's Staff.
Vivian Hoffman, Health Department.
Good morning, Kate Portia, Corvallis County Economic Development Office.
Kelly Lucy, Health Department.
April Holland, Public Health Administrator. Hi, Jessie.
Angela Williams, Canadian Development Department.
I don't think Jessie Ott got overrun, but welcome Jessie. And that looks like Endrosio Munoz just arrived. Welcome, Endrosio. And with that, I think we will begin. Are there any announcements? Okay, hearing none. Any comments from the public? Okay, moving on to reviewing and approving the agenda. We have an addition to the item 4.1. We are joined by Sarah Hartstein and Endrosio Munoz this morning to address in more detail the work that's being done to ensure equity in our vaccine distribution, as well as the work in addressing our particularly vulnerable populations with vaccine distribution. And so that item will probably extend beyond the 30 minutes that's outlined here. The other, a couple of things to note are that we have a couple of letters to consider under other. One is to endorse the tobacco prevention grant proposal to OHA. And the other is a letter in support of the Governor's recommended budget for broadband with some additions for specific programs to enrich broadband investments across the state. So with that, are there any objections to those changes to the agenda?
No. I don't, I don't, I don't have any objections. I just want to point out that I would like to add, under the consideration of the letter support under the Governor's broadband program, the IGA that has been put forward between Benton, Lincoln, and Lane Cog.
Lane.
For consideration by the Board at the same time. It seems like a nice, nice fit for that, for that item.
Sounds good. Thank you. Okay, there are no objections. I will consider the agenda approved. And we will move on to the work session, beginning with our update from the EOC and Department Operations Center, beginning with Brian Lee, if he's here.
Yes, I'm here. Morning, everyone. So a quick update on the EOC. Good morning. So a quick update on the EOC side. We have our mass vaccination clinics going, as always, at Lysa Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Wednesday at 9:00 to 5:00, Thursday at 11:00 to 7:00 p.m., and Friday at 9:00 to 5:00 as well. So just kind of ramping up and getting ready for that process again. This week is Volunteer Appreciation Week, so I just want to kind of give a shout out to all of our volunteers. We get hundreds and hundreds of them every clinic, and really, we could not do this without those volunteers. And it's not just our mass vax clinic volunteers, but also during the wildfire, we had a ton of folks come out, all of our SIR and SAR folks. It's really amazing. I mean, the volunteer and dedication of the community is very, very inspiring. I also want to give a quick summary on Monroe, the Monroe Clinic. This last Saturday went very well. We had about 300 doses administered. Nothing was wasted, and it went very smooth. And again, so much volunteer support and community support. Everyone was very grateful and very happy. So we're starting to see things sort of just get smoother and smoother in the EOC. Last EOC update side is, we of course are working through our staffing challenges. We have a lot of new hires who have been very helpful in relieving a lot of the pressure and jumping right into our operations. That's been extremely helpful and really just appreciate all the support from all the department heads and anyone else who's just involved with getting our staff members. It's really, really, really helpful. Last thing overall in the EOC, things are really positive. People are having a lot of strong, positive feelings towards the work we're doing. So we're starting to see a lot of success, and that'll be highlighted, of course, with Sarah Hartstein, Endrosio, and April's update as well. So I'll head to the EOC.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Brian? Hearing none, we'll move on to Suzanne Hoffman, Health Department Director.
Thank you, good morning. I don't have a lot to add to what Brian said, except to just echo his appreciation for all of the volunteers. And thank you to Brian for his steadfast and high-energy, yet at the same time calming leadership at the EOC. Really works hard to keep everybody moving forward, keep morale up, and it's just, I couldn't do it without it. So thank you so much, Brian. Thank you for making some time as well for us to talk about the specific work around vulnerable populations and underrepresented individuals. I think before we launch into that, April is going to give a brief update and then begin that next part of the presentation and hand off to Endrosio. April, I'll turn it over to you. We will jump in if needed along.
Thank you, Suzanne, and good morning, Commissioners and everyone. I'm happy to start off with an update on our vaccination efforts. In Oregon, 1.6 million people have received at least one dose of vaccine. And in Benton County, 47% of our residents have received at least one dose. We're making good progress. Yesterday, April 19th, marked the day when all Oregonians aged 16 and older became eligible to receive vaccine. Soon we'll see, we just don't know when, we'll see the addition of 12- to 15-year-olds becoming eligible for Pfizer. The overall vaccine picture, you probably all know that last Tuesday, April 13th, the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine was paused under guidance of FDA and CDC in order to investigate reports of very rare but serious blood clots in six individuals of the 6.8 million doses administered. The pause is expected to be brief, and we've heard reports that use may resume as early as late this week. Federal and state retail pharmacy programs have increased significantly, so many more pharmacies have a lot more vaccine than we saw just a few weeks ago. In our general area, Buy Mart, Costco, CBS, Fred Meyer, RiotAid, RiotAid is actually only doing events on-site at employer, at employment sites, Safeway, Walgreens, and Walmart. So our list has expanded significantly. As to our mass vaccination site, we'll have clinics Wednesday, Thursday, Friday this week. Our late-hours clinic will be Thursday from 11:00 to 7:00. We'll have a total in those three days of 6,400 appointments, give or take, including more than 4,000 first-dose appointments. So we're rolling right along despite missing one of the three vaccines. As you know, a few weeks ago, we had an event, a vaccination event in Alcee with 150 doses. And this last Saturday, as Brian said, Monroe was a really successful rural event. We continue to outreach to agricultural workers, adults in custody, persons experiencing houselessness, Black Indigenous, and people of color, and other harder-to-reach populations. I really look forward to us getting into that topic in just one moment. We've been, yeah, just really focusing on access. The mass vaccination clinic is the right venue for many people, but not for all people. I want to, before we go into our special topic today, to discuss the OHA metrics change just once more, in case you may have missed last week. The extreme risk level was 200 cases per 100,000 over the two-week period, or a positivity rate of more than 5%. And the state added a metric to that extreme risk level, indicating that in addition to those criteria, there must also be 300 hospitalizations statewide and a 15% increase in hospitalizations. We have seen an increase in cases here in the last week or so in Benton County, including some outbreaks in schools as they increased in-person attendance. We've also seen an increase statewide and locally in detection of variants of concern. The highly transmissible B.1.1.7, the UK variant, is on the rise statewide, and B.1.3.5.1, the South Africa variant, was detected in wastewater sampling undertaken by OSU Trace here in Corvallis. The variant B.1.4.2.9, which is the Callas, Southern California variant, has been the predominating strain here, but this may be changing with the arrival of B.1.1.7. We are still going to rely on our basic public health tools of protective measures, testing, case investigation, and contact tracing, and of course, vaccination. They continue to be our best way through this. So that was a bit of a segue from vaccination, but bringing it back, we'd like to turn to our special topic today. I'm so proud of this team and the work that they are doing. I'm going to just tee them up with an introduction and a little bit of data for you all, and then leave it to Sarah and Endrosio. If I could become the presenter, I'd love to share some slides.
Hi, April, this is Sarah. I'm wondering, I just asked Erica if I could be the presenter, so I'll pull up the slides for you, if that's okay?
Perfect. Thank you so much, Sarah.
Yeah.
Okay, so today we bring to you an update of how we've been working on outreach and distribution to priority populations. We'll first share this vaccine data and give some updates on communication and language access, on priority scheduling with community partners, and on our small and mobile vaccination events. So what we see on the screen right now is some work, you might notice the formatting might look a little familiar. It's by Peter Van Wath, our talented epidemiologist. He has taken the ALERT data, which is the system that all vaccine, vaccination information, the data goes into, and has created this dashboard. Now, this is a work in progress, and it's not publicly available yet, but we want to show you what he's been working on. This is an overview, and just, you know, as a disclaimer, this information is a little dated. We get a download of information once a week, so this is from last week. But it will show you our trajectory here. You can see, as of last week, the number of people fully vaccinated and people receiving at least one dose. So it's about 5,000 off. So you'll be able to toggle through these different, these different fields or tabs here at the top, once this is, this is able to be, to be shared. And we're just in the refining process right now. Peter's doing an excellent job. You can see at the bottom bar on the left, the population of 16 and older was about 50%. I noted to you that 47% of all Benton County residents have received vaccine, and if you look just at 16 and older, as of last week, half of 16 and older had. And then the other breakdowns here. Do you mind forwarding the slide?
April, I'd like to stop turning my screen for just a moment, so I can make sure I have the correct slides up.
Oh, of course. So part of the reason we wanted to bring data to you is because we use data at every turn to inform our next steps. And as Peter brought this data to us, and before we had it in such a lovely, shareable format, we knew that we had a lot of work to do. So the next few slides you see will show us the, you know, it confirms that we do have considerable work ahead. You might have received some information from OHA on breakdowns of vaccination data. And while that is very useful information, I think that the way that we are seeing it here is, it shows the vaccination rates. So this would be the proportion of persons by racial and ethnic subgroups who have received vaccination. And some of the communication from OHA, it's illustrated a bit differently, and I think this is pretty helpful to see. So you can see clearly here that among the Asian, Black, or African-American, Hispanic, Latinx, and Pacific Islanders, we have quite a lot of work to do. Moving down into our age rates, the blue indicates where we're having a lot of, progress has been made. And then, of course, into the younger populations, obviously, people have only been, some people have only been eligible since yesterday, so we'll continue to see those increase. There's a geographic breakdown here on the right side as well. It's nice to see, you know, similar numbers there. And then finally, on the third data slide that we have for you today, we look at geography. So I want you to know that the Alcee and the Monroe numbers are not fully reflected, and our recent efforts aren't fully reflected yet. Are working on having some type of event in the very near future in the Blodgett region, and will continue to assess need as we go on to serve those geographic disparities as well. So that's all I have for you in terms of data. I'm going to turn it over to Sarah and Endrosio, who will give you a lot more detail on the work that we've been doing. Thank you so much.
Good morning, Commissioners and everyone here today. My name is Endrosio Munoz, and I'm the Health Equity Coordinator for the Benton County Health Department. It's a pleasure to be here. I've been working for the last year or so with our amazing Joint Information Center team and our leadership to practice shifting the ways that we communicate and reach to each of our communities of color. And I guess I just wanted to start off by saying that we are dedicated. We're dedicated not only in getting information out to our most vulnerable communities, our English-language learning communities, our immigrant communities, communities who have low-to-know language and technology literacy skills. And it's hard. It's hard work, but it's, you know, that's why we're here. And we're committed to continuing to learn the best ways to reach these communities and learn more about how they receive information and what type of information it is that they're needing. But I think one of the things for me is so important is not only to get information out, but that we also work on sustaining this work post-COVID, because we're seeing, we're learning so much from these practices on how to best get information out, and how to receive, and how to listen as well, and how to tweak our ways, and how to be the most effective and culturally responsive. So we're also working internally on documenting our processes and continue the culture in the future. So we continue to, as you see on this slide, we'll continue to put information out in English and Spanish, almost one-to-one information from, you know, posters, mailers, videos, web updates, social media posts. And it's just, I'm so proud of the staff on the Joint Information Center, because before I even have to say, "Let's get this translated," they're already on it, and it's already translated. And it's just, you know, this is what I talk about, this is what I mean about shifting our culture. It's that it's ingrained in our, in our body, that that's in our minds, that's what we're supposed to be doing. And we're going to continue to get better, better every single day. Next slide? Thank you. So in addition to English and Spanish, we're learning every single day, more and more, on how to get information out to other sectors of our immigrant, of our community, including our immigrant community, our emerging mum speakers who are individuals in our community, our neighbors that are coming from the Highlands of Guatemala, speaking their native Indigenous language. And we are learning so much from how they get information as well, what type of information they're looking for, and the methods. So we are, we just launched our second video since the pandemic last week, working through our contract processes and getting our amazing interpreters on board and getting information out, reaching really an incredible amount of people in days, in 24 hours. And then, you know, really highlighting in our Arabic, excuse me, in our Spanish and our mum language, our leaders. These are our leaders, and we want them to tell their story about, you know, their vaccine experience, if they are feeling comfortable doing that. But that goes a long ways when you're hearing from their peers of this, of that impact. So we're working to reach our Arabic, mum, Chinese-speaking communities, so really trying to focus on those who speak, who may not have English as their native language, really trying to get information out, dispelling myths around the vaccine and increase confidence in the vaccine. And specifically for our mum language, we know that it is a language that's written in Guatemala, but it hasn't been accessible to those individuals living in the rural parts of the country. And so a lot of the families that are immigrated to our community and our neighbors, they may have very low-to-know literacy skills in their native language, Spanish being their second language, English being their third language. These are English language learners. We still need to continue to work on other non-traditional methods, including the radio. So we have radio ads that are running right now in Spanish and in mum on 880 AM, which is La Campionna, KWP out of Dallas, Oregon. And so we are continuing to do those. So thank you so much for the committed funding to continue doing this work. And we're, again, we're learning. Our amazing team at the Joint Information Center are working on fact sheets, working with our 509J partners, our family liaisons, on getting, getting our FAQs and forums, but also creating an avenue to get this information out, so we can continue to increase testing confidence. And I actually, I think, can we move on to the next slide? Thank you. So just wanted to quickly show our numbers. And it's really incredible, because I haven't seen these numbers with English or Spanish. And so again, we're learning more and more. We, our mum video reached, the one in December, reached about 24,000. We, our mum video reached, the one in December, uh, reached about 24,000 people in like a couple of days. And I mean, it's, uh, and we'll show comparison to other languages, but, um, the one that we just had, uh, this, this month, uh, had about 20,000 impressions or reaches and more views than the first one because this view, this video for this month talked about the video, excuse me, the, the vaccine. And we also included information that, um, you know, from, from Dr. Thompson around the vaccine, FAQs, uh, essentially just addressing some of those concerns that we've been hearing from this community that they would want to hear in a video. And so we're getting ready to film our second video of the year today, um, and include information on general eligibility. And also our spokesperson will be sharing their vaccine experience, uh, just to continue to boost that confidence, especially around communities that are very connected to their faith and that, um, you know, that there are, that there is some barriers in, uh, accessing the, uh, the vaccine in that context. Next slide. So this is kind of a, um, also a trend of what our reach in Spanish videos have been. So you'll see that the reach, um, has been, the views have been about around a thousand, between 750,000. Um, and it, it, we continue to see this, it depends on what topic we include. Sometimes we, uh, include information around the public charge, which is a policy that was in place in the previous administration, uh, and that recently got, um, removed around, uh, accessing immigration benefits. And so, uh, there's also information around the Oregon driver's license, uh, in the state. And although these are not specific COVID-19, um, direct information, it is all related. Uh, and these are means that are popping up right now and, and we have capitalized on the opportunity to get information out through these other means. And we have seen the increases, uh, so you'll see those, those spikes. It's when we have kind of a special topic that we include in addition to COVID-19 vaccine. So we know that this is a good way, this is an effective way of getting information out to our Spanish-speaking community and definitely to our mum-speaking community. And then just a quick comparison, um, the orange is the, um, the Spanish views compared to our, to our English views. And it's all similar con, uh, content. We do provide a culturally specific or appropriate lens in the Spanish versions because of some of the things that we impact the community more than, than in English. But the other thing, the other thing, uh, is that we do provide more information in other ways. It's either on the web or social posts in English that we capture that reach. So these numbers are good to, to know, but they're really, it's just different ways of reaching our communities. So I'm going to hand this over to Sarah, uh, who will talk a little bit more about how we're creating access to the actual vaccine, getting them in our hands. Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you, Rosio and Lilia, for all the good work you're doing, um, in the Joint Information Center. It is really impressive. Um, and I'm hoping the Spanish one-to-one, um, continues at, once the emergency is over. That's such a huge, um, huge and important, um, a method for getting information out to our community members. Um, good morning, everyone. My name is Sarah Hartstein. I'm the Healthy Communities Division Manager, she/her. I wanted to talk a little bit about, um, some of the mass vaccination barriers and concerns that we've heard from our community members and let you know a very quick update on, um, how we're making progress on eliminating those barriers. Um, we heard from our community members at the assessment survey that was initially a very useful tool for determining, um, uh, phases and who would be able to receive the survey link, um, and at what stage at the beginning. Um, it, as we moved through eligibility, it became a barrier to more and more folks, um, with digital disparities, language access issues, et cetera. So that survey is no longer required, the scheduling link is now live. The MyChart social security number field that is built into Epic, um, as of yesterday, that field is now optional. So thank you, everyone, for, for the advocacy to make that happen. We also have continued to communicate that individuals do not need to enter their social security number and to enter all zeros instead. We also have confirmed with Samaritan that individuals will not be asked about social security number at registration on site. Health insurance has also been a concern. Um, it, it is not legal, as you all know, to charge for the vaccine. However, it is legal to charge insurance or bill insurance for a vaccine administration fee. So, um, we have also, in addition to communicating about social security number, we have also been communicating to our community members that, um, including health insurance information is optional if you have it. Um, anybody, if you have health insurance or do not have health insurance, can click the no insurance, um, dropdown option within MyChart. I would also like to share, um, a little bit of our, our priority scheduling efforts for OSU Rezor Mass Vaccination Clinics. Once the scheduling link, um, went live, we felt concerned that many of our populations who, um, are underserved already, who have digital barriers, language access barriers, um, and who also, uh, don't have the luxury of checking their phone or the computer for an appointment during the daytime hours, would be left out of, um, of the appointments at OSU Rezor. So, um, since, uh, March 26th, we've worked with Samaritan to have 150 to 300 appointments reserved each week. Um, we're partnering with many of our trusted community partners, um, to then schedule folks into the OSU Rezor clinic with a very simple scheduling roster that asks for first name, last name, phone number, address, gender, and date of birth. This is, um, a, a great way to make sure that folks who are traditionally underserved and how have barriers to accessing appointments, um, can access this through, uh, linguistically and culturally appropriate, um, manner, um, and also have an opportunity to talk with, uh, their, their, their trusted CBO, um, to ask questions, um, and to increase vaccine confidence. So since, uh, March 26th, we have scheduled over 100, 750 appointments. Um, and again, these are largely folks who are, um, experiencing poverty, um, have language barriers, um, may have intellectual or developmental disabilities, um, or are, um, uh, or are living in areas that, uh, make it a little bit more challenging to, to get to places like Rezor. We're also hosting small rural clinics, as April and Rosio have already mentioned. Um, the Alsea and Monroe clinics sent very well. We're also looking at Blodgett and King's Valley, based on the data that April shared. Um, those, uh, those locations have low vaccine, um, uptake at this point, and so we would like to explore going back out to those locations. So it's not just about geographically, um, choosing where we host, uh, clinics, but it's also making sure that the outreach and the registration process, um, are, um, easy and, uh, that we work through our community partners to make sure that we're getting folks signed up to these clinics who, um, may not sign up on their own. We're also continuing to host mobile clinics on farm sites for agricultural workers. Um, the first mobile clinic was hosted last week. We have additional mobile clinics being scheduled with employers as we speak. Um, in addition to the mobile clinic option for this population, we're also using priority scheduling. Casa Latinos Unidos and Community Services Consortium, along with our school health navigators, have done a great job of getting this particular population into the priority scheduling at OSU Rezor. Um, and then we've also targeted our outreach for the rural clinics, um, for this particular population as well. So thank you so much to our partners, we couldn't do this work without them. We also continue to host, uh, mobile clinics for our in-house population. Cindy DeAndalivo has done an amazing job, a huge amount of kudos to her. She has, um, stopped at each of our shelter sites to provide, uh, vaccination opportunities in addition to the RV car programs that were at the fairgrounds and at Pioneer Park. And she continues to provide, um, an opportunity, right now it looks like every other week at the Corvallis Daytime Drop-In Center, um, when, uh, the need and the vaccine availability allow. As of Monday, Friday, I'm sorry, as of Fri- Friday, um, 80 individuals have been vaccinated that are experiencing homelessness. Um, I also want to give a shout out to the partners who have, um, helped to make this happen, who have been, um, addressing myths, um, placing, uh, really easy-to-read information into sack lunches, um, carrying information with them, um, on outreach and, um, taking the time to talk with folks to increase their confidence to receive the vaccine. I also want to share a little bit about, um, the work that, this is largely Cindy DeAndalivo, who has organized, um, with many of our community partners to reach the population in our county that is homebound and cannot go to a vaccine site to become vaccinated. She has done a huge amount of work and it's a little bit challenging to enumerate, um, the work that's done, but this is our best attempt. Um, our, our Metro West and AMR, which our state contracted, um, have, have done, um, just wonderful work reaching our assisted living facilities, um, senior disabled housing, um, and our, um, uh, homes that house individuals with developmental disabilities. Uh, Fred Meyer Vaccine was provided, uh, sorry, Fred Meyer Pharmacy was provided with Benton County Vaccine, um, and, uh, was able to go out to two assisted living senior facilities to provide vaccinations. And Rice's Pharmacy, um, is visiting adult care homes, hospice, individuals that are homebound, um, and are unable to come to large events. Um, and they're just doing a great job. What a, what great partners we have. And then of course, our primary care clinics are also providing in-home vaccination to their patients who are homebound. Our community health centers of Lynn and Benton Counties are, um, providing vaccines to their patient panels in addition to migrant and seasonal farm workers who may not currently be on their patient panel. And this is occurring in Benton County and in Linton County. So, um, depending on, um, dose allocation, um, and the patient population that is interested in the vaccine, each of these clinic sites is determining, um, how frequently they host vaccine clinics for our community members. I also want to kind of acknowledge the data at the beginning of, um, the presentation that although we are doing all of this work, um, that it's, it's not enough. And so we're not going to stop. Uh, we're continue, going to continue to be informed by the data, by our community partners and our community members on how to shift and pivot, um, and try to provide access to the vaccine for our underserved populations. The Joint Information Center is planning a broad social media campaign that's highlighting, uh, that highlights the social security number, um, and health insurance requirement, um, or lack of requirement, I should say. Uh, we're going to continue to host our Vaccine Confidence Coalition that has pretty broad representation, um, of key leaders, um, in our community who can, um, take information that we provide, share it with our community members and bring back information to us so that we're hearing, uh, what the needs are in the community and, um, we can address barriers and concerns. As Rosio mentioned, we plan to continue additional outreach to our faith communities. Uh, we would like to continue the priority scheduling opportunities at Rezor and invite additional community partners to participate. When we did our initial outreach to community partners, um, there were several organizations that said they did not have the capacity to participate at the ti- at this time, or they had other, um, options available to them and did not need to participate in this opportunity. We also would like to continue to use data to continue to schedule our mobile clinics in areas that, uh, in areas or with populations that have, um, needs. So right now we are, we are talking with Corvallis Multicultural Literacy Center to host a mobile clinic. We are also just beginning to engage with, um, our, uh, our equity and cultural engagement partners at OSU to determine, um, whether a mobile clinic or, um, easier access to Rezor would work for them. And then working with our Islamic community members to address barriers and, um, determine whether, uh, priority scheduling would continue to work for them or if a mobile clinic would
Thank you, um, Sarah and Rosio and April for that presentation. Um, and I'm very grateful for all of the work that you are doing. Uh, I think that in terms of linguistically challenged or technologically challenged folks, we've done a fantastic job. And I think that what some of, maybe what I'm hearing in the community is that that's where our major emphasis is and not on people that might be vulnerable because of their ethnicity or race, uh, either from the Black community or the Asian Pacific Islander community, that don't face the same linguistic challenges perhaps, but are more at risk health-wise and because of past systemic issues and, um, nature of their jobs and exposure. So, um, I, I know, uh, that you all are doing marvelous work at shows. Um, and, um, so just would love to hear a little bit about your thoughts about, um, those communities, um, and then open it up to questions from the, from the other Commissioners before we then move on. I was going to mention really quick that we continue to work with the International Moms Group that, that's connected to the Intude Program and beyond. Um, and we've had, we have seen an increase in getting people in through, through that. And part, uh, uh, I would say a lot of our Arabic-speaking and our, um, Chinese-American community members that have come through and certainly will continue to expand that reach and, and do more of that. I think a lot of our, um, initial outreach, and I'll, I'll speak for myself, my initial outreach has been to those who have low to no, uh, uh, literacy or technology skills or, or barriers with technology. And, um, making sure that those that are the most vulnerable, that don't even know that a Rezor clinic exists or that even the vaccines are out, that's where I've been focusing a lot of my efforts to get information out, including the work that our health navigation team has been doing to go out to the farms. So, um, I would say that every day we're going to continue to do more work and continue to reach communities that historically have been, uh, have experienced disparities, uh, but, but that, um, perhaps may have access to information that may not connect because of, um, you know, the, the information may not be available within their specific platforms, but that's one of the things that we want to continue to do is to bridge, make sure that we, we stay connected, include our information in newsletters that are, you know, that our, our CBOs with newsletters and our, you know, advocacy groups with newsletters to get information out that way. Um, and I, and I guess I would say, um, that we have made some connections previously with as many CBOs and advocacy groups as, as possible. And I think just with the shift between test, excuse me, uh, testing and then vaccine, I think that's, you know, one of them was getting information, getting tested, the other one is now inactive. There's, there's more of a, an active role that our community members need to take. And I think that every day, I mean, we've been doing this, you know, since January. So any new ideas, any fresh ideas, we welcome and, you know, that way we can focus our efforts where, where they need to be. And, and hoping that our, our community-based organizations and advocacy groups, um, are, have, have the capacity- our community-based organizations and advocacy groups have the capacity and/or whatever it is that for us, that what we need to do is continue to just reach out, do more. But we're ready for that. Sarah, I don't know if there's anything else you'd like to add, or Lilia?
I guess what I'll just highlight again is that we have reached out to CBOs and advocacy organizations, and some of them have turned us down. And so, because it may not be the opportunity that is desired. And so, for example, we have not waived eligibility. Now it is moot. We are open to everyone, but our, you know, April and Suzanne can talk much better about our vaccine allocation and how we are allocated our vaccine based on our population and the number of folks that are within each eligibility category. We have not waived eligibility for anyone. Now that we're open to the general population, we have also talked with organizations about priority scheduling, about hosting in partnership a mobile clinic. And so, that has occurred, and I just want to make sure that we share that.
Thank you. Sorry, Commissioner Wise, go ahead.
Oh, no, if you were going to continue down that same road, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah and Rosio. Yes, that said, a big part of the work that Sarah, Rosio, Lilia, and all of us are doing is to continue to evolve and return to the table when something isn't working for a group or a partner. So we don't have a one way that something must be done. We are under some constraints, obviously, because we're using a partner to deliver the majority of our vaccine. However, if a specific way of getting people to vaccination isn't working for an organization, then we are happy to return with engaging with a conversation to find a way that works. And it's been our practice and will continue to be our practice. And we do look forward to building relationships as we go. There's been a lot of, there's a lot of new faces in our community and amongst our organizations. And it's sometimes difficult to build relationships in the midst of an emergency situation. So, and therefore, it's a little hard to just approach in our normal ways without having the time to build first. Sheen, did you have something?
Just to echo that, you know, all along the way, with the scarcity of vaccines and we, you know, the eligibility group system that the state organ, the Governor, OHA, put in place, has obviously been filled with tension and challenge for all counties to manage. And I'm pretty sure that all around the state, different groups at different times were not pleased at the order of the eligibility group and either were voicing those concerns to the Governor's Office, to the Oregon Health Authority, and often directly to their county public health or legislators. Be that as it may, you know, if we for any reason chose not to follow those eligibility rules for one group, it would be very difficult to explain why we weren't going to waive them for all other groups. And at a certain point, that kind of stepping away from what we're required to do with those eligibility groups could have potentially impacted the flow of vaccines into Benton County, at least temporarily. And that is not a risk that we are willing to take in the interest of public health for all. So I do think, as April said, we have some relationship building yet to do because of new leaders in many areas, including ourselves. And it's unfortunate if any particular group would prefer not to work with us because of our unwillingness to waive eligibility requirements at a point in time. But now, the door is open, and we are now getting more and more and more vaccines. So our ability to be flexible in the many ways that Sarah and Rosio described is increasing to be able to really accommodate whose preferences and desires and needs in ways that were pretty impossible to do early on and move with any kind of speed or volume. So our sincere hope is that partners will remain open to that conversation and want to work with us, and we'll continue those efforts sincerely every step of the way.
I have a few questions and comments, kind of in the same vein as Commissioner Osro mentioned. But first of all, thank you very much for all of your work. Just hearing all of this is just incredible, blows me away, and I'm so thankful that we have all of you working really hard for Benton County. First question, it listed the vaccination rate by racial and ethnic subgroup. Those percentages are just, out of everyone who's vaccinated, you know, 12% identify as Asian, 12% identify as Black. Is that correct? Not the percentage of the population that identifies as that group?
Right. So this is sort of a departure from the way that OHA data that you may have seen. So I'll back up a little bit. When a person is vaccinated, alert gathers race and ethnicity on a multiple-choice basis, right? So someone can select more than one racial category in addition to the Hispanic Latinx category, and no one's, because they're not grouped into a multiple race category with an alert. The state uses something called the rarest race algorithm to assign people who identify as more than one race or ethnicity to a single race or ethnicity so that stats can be computed using a single choice methodology. However, this allows vaccination rates to categorize people into single races. However, what our epidemiologist, Peter, has done is to compute the population percentages as a race alone or in combination with another race. So, you know, we can get a denominator of that from census data. It's no less accurate. But what it does is it allows us to present data that does not overstate the vaccination rates among non-white subgroups.
So when it comes to, so it says, you know, we have 12% Asian vaccination, do we know what percentage of our Benton County population identifies as Asian?
Yes, we do have that information. I don't have it in front of me, but that's what OHA was more, yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, the heart of my question is really, how are we doing in regards to total population? You know? If we, yeah, does that make sense?
It does make sense.
Yeah, are we doing a good job with outreach? Are we doing a good job with those populations? Or do they need work? I guess that's my question.
Sure. Well, in short, they need work, and the work is ongoing. This shows you, you know, how much of people who identify with these groups have received vaccination. So rather than saying that I don't have the number in front of me, that 9% of Benton County identifies as Asian, for example, and 30% of those have been vaccinated, this just takes it right to the group itself. We can certainly break it down in different ways so that you can see countywide what it looks like, but we wanted to sort of depart from looking at it in the overall picture for this example so that you could look at each subgroup.
Sure. That would be really great information to have whenever you have time to do that. I don't want to add too much work to your plate, but that would be, I would find that information helpful.
Great, yeah, absolutely.
And then, I wonder, have you, you know, I see all the great videos that you guys put out on Facebook, and they're saying great outreach to the Hispanic and Latinx and the Mums. But kind of what then Commissioner Osro mentioned, there might be some room for outreach to people of color that speak English that maybe aren't sort of, you know, I don't know the right word, identifying or making a connection. You know, is there room for maybe having a video with someone who identifies as Black or, you know, partnering with NAACP or the Lonnie B. Harris Black Cultural Center or Asian Pacific Cultural Center, something like that?
Absolutely, Commissioner Wise. In fact, that was a strategy that we employed deeply, isn't the word, to a great extent early on in the pandemic. For the first, oh gosh, maybe six months, at least four, we produced a daily video. And part of that strategy with the daily video was to seek trusted community leaders, whether it was from faith-based organizations, racial, ethnic, identity groups, other identity-based groups, the cultures, and feature those. And so, frankly, I think that that's kind of why we got such a great uptick with the videos in the beginning of the pandemic, because we were very intentional to do that. As the first 90 days of the pandemic started to flow from an informational standpoint, we saw stronger guidance and protocols at the state level, so we were trying to do as much locally, we made a decision from a capacity, a staff and capacity standpoint to no longer invite guest speakers to our videos because it's, I mean, it takes a huge amount of coordination to pull that off five days a week. From there, that strategy was reduced further with the VOC. However, you hit the nail on the head. It's a valuable tactic to convey and deliver messages from key leaders, from trusted voices. So that's something that we certainly could look at, putting staff up and down.
And then, I guess I just have one other question, which is more for my personal knowledge. So the individuals who speak Mums, is it appropriate to refer to them as Latinx or Hispanic or people who speak Mums? Or does anyone know?
Well, personally, I don't know. I say Mums, speakers, speakers, that's what I know that they speak. If you ask them directly, they will not identify as Hispanic or Latinx. They'll say they're Wamalans.
Okay.
So it just really depends on who you're speaking with and if you're speaking Spanish or in Mums or English with another English speaker. So that, which is why I refer, just because they are Mums, but they're also English language learners. So they are everyday, you know, it's working and, you know. So I think I would want to ask them, you know, and see, but I would almost say, because even as an Mexican American, I think the term Hispanic has been put on this community, and that's what we, in general, that's what we, but they would opt for that term in Spanish as well. But if you ask them specifically, like infra-personal, they would say that they're Mexican, Mexican English. It just really depends. Ask them, like Puerto Rican or, they would say that they're Puerto Rican or Mexican. So for us, or for me, as I'm still a Latino student, I would say.
Okay, great, thanks, thank you so much.
Couple questions, comments. I really appreciate all these efforts. It's pretty easy to keep track of what was on ReSIR in 2000 last Thursday and the big numbers, which is really important, but figuring out what populations aren't well-served by a mass vac effort is important. And I think Cindy, not DeAngelis, but something like that, couple more syllables, I think, in there, but it's on the front page of the GT this morning. So with nice colored pictures, at least in the online version, and it's nice to get wider recognition of some of the efforts that we're doing. So that's great. And Rosio mentioned in her report that the rural outreach should continue after COVID. And I would definitely support those efforts and encourage, not just rural, but all our efforts. I keep seeing statistics about the flu season that we basically didn't have. I don't know if these are anywhere close to final numbers, but the flu, regular flu might be down 99%, some huge number. I see the Health Department people shaking, nodding, so I must be in the ballpark as far as the numbers and figure out, I mean, we can't continue all the COVID protocols that we've put into place and putting burdens on our businesses, but we sure can do things like, if you're sick, try to stay home. If you're at one of those kind of jobs where if you don't show up, you don't get paid, maybe continue wearing masks and figure out what things that we've been doing, that we are doing, that we can continue a relatively small expansive effort and keep ourselves We should get some benefits out of these heroic efforts that we've been doing this last year and which ones can we continue to, especially next fall and winter, if the COVID is down to a dull roar, help keep some of the other illnesses that fly around, especially in the wintertime, that we can do better. So I really appreciate that comment, Rosio. That's it.
I'd like to thank all of you very much. And given that it's Volunteer Appreciation Week, also all of the volunteers that have been supporting us in this work. It was wonderful to see firsthand the enthusiasm of the volunteers down in Monroe this weekend. So I really enjoyed that opportunity to help out. Look forward to doing it again. Thank you. You all were very kindly in your response to our questions, and we know it's extremely challenging work, and you're doing a fantastic job. And we'll just keep pushing when we get feedback because we need to know what all you're doing and to hear from you more regularly. And I think that the dashboard that Peter's putting together will be helpful as well, just so that we have that information transparency to the best of our ability, knowing that there are a lot of data issues and challenges as well. So much appreciated. Thank you. I'd like to keep us moving because we had a very open and flexible schedule now. We've ducked a lot of the air out of it. So I would like to continue with the rest of the presentation from the others in terms of EOC update. the, the rest of the presentation, uh, from the others in terms of EOC update. And I believe that the next person on the agenda for, um, update is Lilia.
Good morning, good morning. I am having a baby here with you, uh, with just some morning. Um, so it has been, it's been two weeks, yeah, since, since I saw you last, so I actually should, uh, grab my other IAP out, but I can't find it, so I'll go through memory, which I mean, it'll be even shorter. So, um, in particular, uh, we've gotten into a swing of things with Reacher, so in particular, in the last two weeks, uh, a big focus for us was the launch of our mobile clinic, I'm sorry, our rural and small clinic strategy, uh, down in Alsey as well as Monroe. That was, um, Alsey was a bit of a stretch for us from a staffing perspective, because we have to staff Reacher at the same time. Of course, Alsey, um, there's limited cell service out there, limited connectivity, so, um, it makes being a PIO just a little bit more difficult, but it was a lovely day out in Alsey. Um, I, I worked at Alsey event and I, I had a wonderful time. The people were great, um, the volunteers were great, and it was a great time, great food, too. Uh, really appreciated the partnership from the local businesses out there, uh, with John Boys and, and Dabs and the school, so that was wonderful. Uh, I wasn't able to be at the Monroe event, but what I have heard is that the Monroe event was so smooth, uh, they wished everyone could have come to the Monroe event. They just thought it was wonderful. So I thought that was a great report, um, from, uh, being out in terms of small clinics. What we in the JIC really have been focusing on, um, oh, we, we focus on a lot of things, but one thing that has been newer, uh, focus has been dealing with, um, the, the surplus of doses. Yes, this week, we, um, had some challenges with our allocation that got sorted, but, for the past two weeks, we've, we've hit the surge, uh, and boy, we are filling it. And so with, uh, the surge, we're going to see different problems, we're going to see different communications needed and different messages. And so one of the pieces that we have been, um, very aggressively working to overcome is the surplus dose conundrum that we are seeing at the end of vaccine clinics. So surplus doses come from no-shows, from, you know, a little bit of stuff left in the bottom of the vials, and so, uh, there is a little bit of pickiness, uh, privilege that we're seeing as well. Some people want a specific type of vaccine, so then they'll cancel their appointment when they find out the brand of the vaccine on the date, uh, that they were previously scheduled. So anyways, multiple factors are creating a surplus of doses at the end of vaccines. Uh, and we, in the JIC, uh, have been responsible for, um, frankly, taking on that town crier role of doses, doses, right, at the end of a clinic? And so we do that in a variety of ways, both digital as well as walking around and, and asking individuals personally. So that has been, um, it's, it's been a challenge, it's been exciting, um, and we have run it through the test a couple of times, run into a couple of issues, run into a couple of successes, uh, but that has been, I would say, a big story of the last 10 business days for us. Um, of course, you know, we had to, to scramble and, uh, highlight and amplify the message about the pause on the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine last week. That was surprise. Of course, we have the broadened eligibility. Another piece that, um, was a pit impact to the team, uh, was the team last week also had to pivot and do a fire advisory communications, um, on one of the days. And I know, at least from, um, an emotional perspective, that was really tough on some of the team members, because it reminded them of last October, um, and how rough that, that week was in last October. Uh, but they, they pulled through and they did a great job, um, prepping basically everything that we had, uh, completed last October to be reissued, put out, um, at a, at a Doc's Nota. So, you know, the wonderful job doing some proactive pre-planning on that. Yep, th- those are the main highlights. So it has been, uh, really quite a successful last couple of weeks, moving into the surge, and we've just been busy, busy, busy. So happy to answer any specific questions, um, if you have any, otherwise, um, I will happily turn it on to my next speaker.
Thank you. Appreciate the update and thank you for pivoting so quickly on the fire warnings. It was a very scary afternoon with the wind blowing hard, given how dry it's been. I understand we have rain coming next week and I couldn't be more welcome. So, move, I think we will move on. Uh, the next up is Kate Portia. Thanks, Lilia.
Absolutely, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Um, it's so nice to see you. Couple, couple quick updates from our office. I think you're all aware of it, if anybody's listening too, we have, uh, just a handful of different funds that are open and available right now. Business Oregon just opened their second round of commercial, uh, rent relief grants. So those have come, and this is the, the second run at this. Of course, they had their, their other program that had opened, uh, gosh, back in March. So that's up and going. There's also some neat funding programs around, uh, Restaurant Revitalization Fund, um, and, gosh, oh, there's also a Small Enterprise Fund for Immigrant Businesses. So there's a handful of items out there. This information, we just pushed in our newsletter that I think went out yesterday, and it's on our website as well. So again, we're just using our website as a clearinghouse and the newsletters as a way to get the information out. Um, we continue to have businesses taking advantage of our different programs, as you've probably seen. So our Business Right-of-Way Program is still open and as the sun comes out, I think people are really enjoying the space. When, when we are out of the emergency response part of this pandemic, our team will be having conversation, uh, at least with city policymakers, to see about the potential to keep that on, maybe temporarily through the summer. I think what we've learned, people love sitting outside when the weather's good and enjoying their favorite restaurants and, and businesses, and the businesses love it too, right? So, so we'll be exploring that, uh, longer term. We also, you may have heard, um, have a sidewalk cafe grant program open here in Corvallis. Uh, typically, the restaurants that are using the sidewalks have to pay a fee, um, to use our right-of-way space, and we have a grant program that's enabling folks to apply and, um, get a grant to fund those fees, which I think is really, really nice. Two last things. We have, and in fact, right now, Heather is going to pick up our next round of personal protective equipment for businesses. Super exciting. Uh, this again is the second round from Business Oregon, and we reapplied and got a bunch more stuff. So we've, uh, commandeered the Madison Avenue Meeting Room, and we're going to be doing, um, pickups for businesses that they want to swing by and get PPE, mask, gloves, thermometers, wipes, all sorts of good stuff. Every Friday in May, our team is going to be staffing that from 10 to 4. And, uh, Heather and Catherine, Catherine have, um, come up with a very clever and safe contactless pickup method. It works really well, so we'll be there and folks can swing by and get what they need, which I think is super exciting. Finally, oh, I'm, oh, sorry, on the CDDG, the city has gotten out their CDB funding for businesses, and I know you all were almost ready to get that going. I think there's just a press release, uh, that is going to get reviewed and, um, that we're in the home stretch of getting that going for the county, too, which our team will help promote, um, those funds as well. And finally, our team is on the tail end of, um, drafting our Economic Recovery and Resiliency Plan. Um, this work has gone really, really well, and it actually will feed into and, and really be the basis, if not, but really the meat of our next two-year operating plan, that of course we'll bring to you all to take a look at, but that, that work is underway. Just monitoring chatter to see, you know, businesses that are having trouble, we're still hearing from some folks who are struggling and trying to get them matched up, um, with funding or programs. But generally, the reopening, of course, has relieved, uh, a fair amount of pressure, and if we can keep going in the right direction, thanks in such large part to the work of all the people, but you've already heard from today and all the volunteers, um, it's, it's really helping to stabilize our economy and to stabilize our businesses. So I know you guys have said it, but just, we just want to express our own gratitude for the, for the work being done. It's, it's amazing.
Kate, now that you've been doing this for a little over a year, uh, do you feel like, uh, you've got good, um, um, contact? Are you reaching the, the businesses that are out there that, um, need help?
You know, I think we are way better at it than when we started, and I think, like we, we told you when we did our year in summary, we learned the videos, um, tend to really reach people. Um, social media is a way better way to reach people, um, through our Instagram accounts. Uh, we have Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, LinkedIn, we use all of those, and they're very, very good. But we still think we can do better, Commissioner Malone. And so, um, it's funny, I just wrote down, we, we really, um, continue to work hard and have an awareness about how we can do better, especially in the space of our minority-owned businesses, of our rural businesses. And I actually wrote down, uh, and have had this brain idea, but to, uh, do a debrief with my friend Sarah and Rosio, to kind of, you know, all the great information that they've learned through the public health side of the house, I think there's some takeaways that our office can use too in terms of interacting with those businesses. So we, we continue to be grateful for that partnership and want to, um, do all we can in our outreach.
Great, thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Kate. Um, looking forward to, um, being able to get our CDBG dollars out the door as well, um, and, um, moving onward from there. And very much look forward to seeing the, um, two-year, um, strategic plan for the Economic Development Office coming up. Thank you so much. On the cal, on the agenda, uh, we had, um, noted that George Rooney might be with us to present financials. I don't think he's here, and I think we're going to...
No, there's, Commissioners, there's no update for George. I just checked a bit ago, so you can move right along, yeah.
Good, thank you. I was hoping that that would be the case. So with that, we'll thank everyone that has been with us this morning from the Public Health and, and Leadership Operations Center and, um, move to the next agenda item, which is to hear from Danielle Brown, um, about, um, law enforcement and mental health co-response proposal, uh, with the Corvallis Police Department. Danielle?
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. So I wanted to bring with, to you guys this morning, a proposal that, um, Chief Nick Hurley and I have been working on, to create a collaborative crisis co-response model that would include the opportunity for law enforcement and, uh, mental health professionals to be responding to individuals experiencing behavioral health crisis. What we're proposing really is, um, creating a one-year pilot project to help with data, um, collection and analysis to determine the needs of the community and develop a longer-term program that would appropriately address those needs. Um, I think we're all aware of the incredible response and push in, in the community, both locally and nationally, to have mental health professionals engaging and responding to mental health crises in the community, um, and wanting to do that in a very, um, safe and respectful manner. So in this pilot project, we're proposing that we use this first year to develop the, um, processes by which we will be able to respond appropriately to those, those individuals experiencing behavioral health crisis. What Chief Hurley and I are proposing is that we utilize appropriate, or our current existing staff to develop this pilot, this one-year pilot project, which will include, one, a Corvallis Police Department officer and one qualified mental health professional, a therapist from the Behavioral Health Department, to be responding to 911 calls for service or community calls for service regarding individuals in behavioral health crisis. This will decrease the need for law enforcement to be the primary point of contact for those calls as they come in and to have an alternative treatment option, um, with our QMHP responding, uh, in tandem with the law enforcement officers. Uh, because this will just be one team, we are proposing just one shift, uh, for the week. Some of the details are still to be determined in terms of the specific shift, the specific staff, um, and the roles and responsibilities we're continuing to finalize and develop between, uh, the Health Department and Corvallis Police Department. But I, but this will really provide an opportunity to develop a longer-term, sustainable program that will respond to behavioral health crisis in a more appropriate and, and supportive way. I want to just comment, though, that Corvallis Police Department has done a tremendous job in report, in responding to individuals in behavioral health crisis. They've been very focused on, um, crisis intervention training and ensuring that all CPD officers are, um, are CIT-trained and, and, uh, engaging in trauma-informed inter, uh, interactions with community members. This is really just a next step in that direction, in providing those supports to individuals in the community who are experiencing behavioral health crisis. I did submit a one-page proposal to, to you all, um, for your review this morning, which includes some high-level data points that we're going to be, uh, collecting over the year to develop the long-term program. Things that are included, that data that's included are, um, any interactions that resulted in force response, the magnitude and frequency of calls, determining peak call hours, and any successes and challenges that come out of this co-response model. Um, we want to be able to bring this back to you guys at quarterly intervals to review the data, and then again at the final one-year interval to really develop the long, long-term ongoing program. Uh, so I will pause there for any questions. I also, just, I, sorry, Commissioner Ojero, this is a product of the WCJC Subcommittee that, um, Commissioner Ojero is chairing, and I am also participating in, so this isn't something that's just developed out of thin air, this is, uh, a part of that WCJC Subcommittee. I apologize. Go ahead, Commissioner.
That's okay. Um, yes, there is a larger context, and there are other partners at the table of the WCJC Subcommittee, um, including Oregon State University, uh, both in terms of their, um, CAPS program, uh, Psycho, uh, Counterweight Services, and in terms of their law enforcement arm, um, with Shannon Anderson, Chief Shannon Anderson. And, uh, the others that, around the table include, uh, people from Samaritan, um, uh, health systems as well. So, uh, we are, uh, taking advantage of, of that and the fact that there are other law enforcement agencies in that Subcommittee to help us really kick the tires on this and to, uh, make sure that we're, uh, collecting the right data and, uh, thinking through, uh, the options. Uh, the other thing I would highlight is that we were made aware by, uh, OSU staffer, uh, of, of an international, um, working group that's working on standing up this kind of, um, uh, mental health crisis response, uh, team. Um, and Danielle and I were both able to sit in last week and we gleaned a lot of good information from them. So, um, there are definitely wrinkles still to work out. One of them is that a lot of these outreach groups are proactive in nature, uh, they uh, do a lot of street outreach, or what our harm reduction team is doing. Um, so there's some overlapping, uh, areas, potential overlap with, um, the street outreach team that's coordinated by the Corvallis State and Rockland Center, or by Samaritan's health workers, or by our own health harm reduction people. And we, part of what we will spend this year doing is figuring out where those boundaries are and what, you know, what teams can respond best to what situations. And, um, so I expect we'll be doing a lot of learning. Uh, and I'm grateful that you're already planning on quarterly reports. I think that's going to make a big difference. Last item, um, how did the city council respond last night? Um, I know that you, but Chief Hurley presented to them.
I have not heard from Chief Hurley today, so I cannot answer that question. I will circle back with him today about how city council was, uh, responding to that. I'll also comment that I am meeting with, um, Sheriff Van Arstol on Friday, and this is one of the topics on my agenda to speak with him about.
I would also comment that, um, in the context of the Hope Advisory Board's recommendations and the recent, uh, two-week, uh, community, um, open comment period that we had about those, uh, early... and the recent two-week community open comment period that we had about those early recommendations, there was a recommendation to stand up this type of group in that Hope Plan, and it is very highly supported in all of the feedback we got from the community so that we know that it's one of the more supported elements of that Hope strategy as well.
Thank you, Danielle, for bringing this to us and explaining it, and thank you for the information, the packet ahead of time. That was very helpful. This project has my support. I'm really glad that WCJC has been working on this. I think it's great. And I agree with what you said about Corvallis Police Department being well-trained and doing a good job. So thank you for highlighting that as well. I know there are some people in our community that would like us to sort of rush in or jump in headfirst and launch a much larger version of this, but I do think that this is the best way to go about it, making sure that we have all the data so that we can be effective in the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Danielle, I guess my question is, you mentioned a two-person operation with the other partners, the OSU and Samaritan, and our Chair of Department. Would you anticipate being able to scale that up within the first year? Or is the plan to pretty much limited to the two-person crew until you get through the first year and then adjust the effort?
That's a good question, which I think is a little hard to answer right now. I think if we start to identify quickly that there is a significant need, I think we would bring that back to you all to talk about expanding the program. That, of course, would take additional FTE, what, you know, with the reassignment of current FTE for this pilot project, that, you know, if we needed to expand it, that isn't something we could do with current staffing models. So it would be something that we would bring back for additional staffing approval. You know, it's really hard to answer that question because I don't have any idea of the scope of need. I think we have some data from CPD that indicate the number of calls they respond to in any given year that have a behavioral health flavor, but I don't know how accurate that data is because it's hand-gleaned information from the law enforcement database. So, you know, we may get into this and find out that these calls are the majority of calls that CPD is getting during any given shift, and we just don't have any concept of that. So I think there is a potential that this could expand quickly, but I think we really want to use this pilot project identified year to help scope all of that.
Thank you. And I'm very supportive of this effort. This is probably overdue, but it's, it looks like a thoughtful proposal and definitely has much support.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. I would also mention that House Bill 2417 is still alive, and that did include funding for some of this, but it was contingent upon having a crisis rescue center and a sobering center and an emergency shelter 247365. And we don't have any of those facilities. So we are in that chicken and egg kind of a place. I think that was, that bill was in Ways and Means Committee. There's still opportunity to further amend that bill, but I'm not sure where it's going to go. So we're looking forward to further discussion as we move forward. And clearly, having been involved in this, I am supporter of this proposal, and I'm really looking forward to further helping fine tune it. Okay, are there any further questions? Or not, we'll move on.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Danielle. Okay, and next we'll move to Jennifer Ward from Public Works to talk to us about the Alternative Wildlife-- Uh-oh.
Protection Program.
Protection Program, yeah. I was thinking prevention, protection, get lost there. Anne Lynn Mickey, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Commissioner Malone and Commissioner Ojero, I know that you've received annual reports about the Agriculture and Wildlife Protection Program in the past. This is my first opportunity to present to Commissioner Wise. Hello. So if the Board will indulge me, perhaps I'll provide just a little bit of background about the program and then dive in more to this year's report.
Jennifer, I want to interrupt for just a sec. Will you need to have presenting status?
No.
Are you going to--
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The Agriculture and Wildlife Protection Program began, or the AWPP, began as a pilot program in 2017 to support the use of non-lethal animal damage deterrents to prevent conflicts with wildlife. The AWPP funds two things. It funds educational outreach about non-lethal deterrents, and it also funds a grant program for Benton County landowners who wish to use non-lethal deterrents to protect their crops and their farm animals. Under the pilot program, the first AWPP grants were awarded in 2018. Last biennium, the AWPP was funded at $45,000 and grants were awarded in both 2019 and 2020. Recipients of AWPP grants are required to submit annual reports for three years after their project is implemented. So this 2020 annual report summarizes data from the 2018 projects through year three of implementation, data from the 2019 projects through year one of implementation, and the awarding of the 2020 grants. It also provides information about the educational outreach activities that we were able to conduct in 2020 before the start of the pandemic. So since you have the full report, I'll just mention some highlights. So the program's main outreach effort is participating in the OSU Small Farms Conference. The conference is held in February each year, so while it didn't happen this year, 2021, former Parks Director Laurie Starha and I did host an informational table at the conference last year, 2020. Also in February of last year, we hosted an informational table at the Corvallis Ecofilm Festival. In 2018, the AWPP awarded $35,363 in grants to eight Benton County farms. Six of those eight projects were actually completed, and here are some highlights from their third year of implementation. So Farm One lost a lamb, a goat, and a kid to the suspected cougar. And while this is unfortunate, it's also understandable since this farm's AWPP grant funded portable electric fencing, which is very effective against smaller predators but does not stand a chance against a cougar. Farm Four lost some poultry to great-horned owls, which are common predators on their farms. However, they report that their two livestock guardian dogs, both of which were funded by the AWPP, are getting better at identifying the owls and protecting their flocks. In 2019, the AWPP awarded $31,752 in grants to nine Benton County farms, and seven of those nine projects were actually completed. From the first, here are some highlights from the first year of implementation. Farm One lost one chicken to a hawk, but additional placement of holographic tape prevented further predation. Farm Two lost one chicken, likely to a raccoon. They found that their electric fence charger needed to be repaired, to be repaired, and once it was, no more losses. Farm Seven lost three chickens to either a hawk or a bobcat. This farm had used their AWPP funds to build a secure shelter for their sheep, which they hoped to use for their chickens as well, but apparently the chickens were not to be persuaded and they haven't been using the shelter. So they report that the loss of three chickens is actually less than what they've had in the past, and they're taking additional measures to safeguard their chickens. All farms from both years reported that they have experienced fewer conflicts with wildlife since using non-lethal deterrents. Additionally, all farms from both years reported being either highly satisfied or satisfied with the non-lethal methods and tools they selected, with the individual AWPP elements they utilized, and with the AWPP overall. I like getting these annual evaluations each year because it provides insight into the experiences that Benton County farmers are having as they implement their AWPP-funded non-lethal deterrents projects. I find it encouraging to read quotes like the following. Quote, "People ask if the fencing and lights work. All I can say is I haven't lost any livestock while I have been using these methods." Quote, "We used to shoot raccoons in the chicken yard. Now they don't appear to get in to kill the chickens. As for cougars, they have so far given our farm a pass while killing livestock on neighboring farms." Quote, "The combination of fencing and a protective structure appear to be working very well at this time. No losses even when the neighbors had goats killed by cougars." Quote, "The electric perimeter fencing has completely excluded coyotes from the pastures." Quote, "We have had feces of either coyote or cougar on our driveway and coyotes super close by, but no injuries to livestock nor any loss of life within our fences." And lastly, quote, "The shed has saved our sheep's lives without a doubt. We are so happy to report zero losses and are expecting lambs in the spring." In 2020, $11,880 remained for a second round of funding. The county awarded $10,395 in grants to four farms, and all four of those projects were completed. The first-year post-project evaluations for these reports will be reported to the Boards next year. Of the $45,000 that funds the AWPP, $5,000 is specifically set aside for beaver-related projects. Since conflicts with beaver are generally less predictable than other wildlife conflicts, landowners may apply for an AWPP beaver-related grant at any time of the year, not just in the summer application window. In February of this year, 2021, the county received an application for and awarded the first beaver-related AWPP grant of this biennium. A farm in Kings Valley was awarded $485 to install protective caging around the fruit trees in its orchard, and the project will be completed by the beginning of June. Although this project was technically awarded in 2021, since it was awarded and completed in the second year of this biennium, its annual reports will be included with the rest of the 2020 projects. That's all I have to share with you, and I am happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you. I know that we had gotten lots of interest in this project from beyond Benton County, around the state of Oregon, and around the country. Have those contacts continued and resulted in any similar programs elsewhere?
Very interestingly, there's legislation in the state, in our state Capitol right now, for piloting a program in other counties across the state. Yes, there has been interest and outreach with organizations outside of our state. None, especially with the pandemic, those have kind of been put on hold. There had been workshops and conferences on the topic that all got put on hold. So as far as implementation outside of Oregon, I'm not aware of where that stands.
Jennifer, I really appreciate the thoroughness of the report and the gathering of data. As somebody that lives in the rural area, I'm familiar with some of these critters. In fact, I'll blame it on you, Lynn, because I went a little late. I rode my bike around the block. Well, it actually wasn't your fault. I stopped in dark neighborhood, and it was getting kind of dark when I was hitting the home stretch. And I think I saw a pretty good-sized animal run across the road, had a long tail, long tail. So I think, pretty sure it was a cougar. But maybe it saw me coming and wanted to get the heck out of there. I hope. But it's a great program, and I appreciate the map showing projects scattered around the county pretty well. So you folks have done a nice job of getting the word out. So looking forward to more information. And it really is a pilot project. One of your farms mentioned, well, it worked for, fencing worked for little animals, and not so good on cougar or bigger ones. And say, well, okay, we have to, we have to learn how to deal with this because there are cougars around. But I appreciate the thoroughness of reports and requiring the recipients to give feedback so the program as a whole gets smarter.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate you pointing out the map that was included in the annual report this year. That's new. And I just want to point out that that was provided by Randy Camellio, and he and his wife have really been partners to the county. In fact, they kick-started the whole program, and they've really continued to be involved and to be supportive. I thought the map was a great idea, and I was glad that I could include it in the report.
And I'll say thank you as well. I appreciate all the information in the report, and I'll just share that as I was writing for Commissioner, this is a topic that people actually reached out to me to say, you know, how do you feel about this? You better support it. And I would say many more, many, many more people support this than the actual farmers who are taking advantage of it. I would say there are many in our community that just support it as just, you know, the right thing to do in general for, you know, our ecosystem. I found that as well, yes.
So we also do continue to have a relationship with the regional trapper. Do we have any sense for how busy he has been and what's going on in the area with respect to lethal control?
Yes, thank you. So I have been able to engage with him, and we've had some great meetings and talks over the course of this past year. So one challenge, creating reports actually is a challenge for USDA, not just because of political sensitivities, but actually their office infrastructure and ability to actually generate reports is actually quite clumsy. It's been a challenge for Benton County as well because it's a service that we fund, and we haven't had a very steady, we haven't had very steady feedback about how that program is going. So I'm really pleased that USDA committed to quarterly reports. The USDA provides a couple of services for us. One is the pickup and removal of deer carcasses that may end up on our roadways, and then also the trapping that you mentioned. And so we, the first of those quarterly reports was due April 15th. They had it to me by April 13th. What I am hoping is that as those annual reports come in, then I can provide that, I can bring that together as annual data to provide to you as an addendum to this annual AWPP report. That's my intention.
That's fabulous. I look forward to that. Thank you.
Yeah.
And the average size of the farms using the AWPP continues to be relatively small, I take it? I confess, I have not looked at that report in depth, so if it was listed there--
No, that's fine. Yes, it does, they do tend to be on the smaller side. I'd say average 10 acres.
Okay.
Ready for a motion?
I'm moved to approve the 2020 Agriculture and Wildlife Protection Program Annual Report. Second. Oh, favor signal five with an eye.
Eye?
Eye. Eye. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Appreciate also your willingness to move this up by a couple of weeks to--
And, and good job on getting very photogenic goats for the opening page there.
They are so cooperative. I mean, really, the farm visits, I have to say, are the funnest part of my job. Really, really fun to be out there.
Excellent. Okay. Well, moving onward, I am taking a look at our agenda, and we are up to our business meeting. I propose that we take a five-minute break and reconvene at 10:50 and take up the consent calendar at that time. Well, we will now pick up with item five, our consent calendar. The consent calendar today includes three sets of minutes from February 23rd, March 2nd, and March 16th board meetings. Are there any changes or corrections to these minutes? Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I agree. My motion, that's why I left the video. Really appreciate getting minutes in a timely manner and thank Erica and others that have caught up a large backlog of board minutes. And so I was reading through these last night, and it was, oh, yeah, we're still working on that. And it is really helpful to get these out in a timely manner. And with that, after that commentary, I will move to approve the consent calendar.
Second. All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
And thank you again to Erica and Teresa and all the others who make that minute-taking happen. It does help a lot to have them available in a quick turnaround fashion. Okay. Moving on, we next have a proclamation, item 6.1, in the matter of proclaiming May 2021 as Historic Preservation Month in Benton County. And I see that we have Doug Eaton here with us, and I know that Inga's on the line as well. So Doug, if you'd like to read the proclamation, that'd be great. But you have to turn your mic on.
Okay. Good morning. Historic Preservation Month will be observed during May 2021. Historic preservation is a valuable tool for maintaining community character, promoting sustainable development, investing in the economy and tourism, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and educating the community on the country, the county's rich history and treasures. And preservation and adaptive reuse of historic buildings is an environmentally viable practice that encourages community reinvestment, promotes socially, culturally, and economically rich communities, and honors Benton County's place in Oregon's story. And Benton County's theme for Historic Preservation Month is Bridging Cultures, Bridging Time, which hopes to celebrate connections that are made through physical infrastructure or social gatherings and build pride and ownership of our past and plans for our future. And events held during the month of May will be limited by necessity, like last year, but the county will, will endeavor to commemorate our history with solo-oriented events and web-based informative experiences that will offer education and entertainment. Now, therefore, the Board of Commissioners proclaims, is that your, are you supposed to say that? I'll finish here. Therefore, the Board of Commissioners proclaims 2021 as Historic Preservation Month in Benton County and invites everyone to join together to recognize and participate in this special observance. So.
Thank you.
I've never read a proclamation before. And before I, and I want to, I know Annabelle is not here, but she interviewed me back in 2005, and I have been on the HRC for 16 years and have enjoyed every minute of it. I've learned so much about our county, and I, I was put onto, I got placed on the, on the commission as an owner of an historic property in the city. So it's been a really, a learning experience for me, and I just appreciate all that you guys are doing, and thanks for having me this morning.
Thank you. Much appreciated. What you do.
Yeah, thank you.
And I will take a motion from one of my fellow commissioners to formally proclaim Historic Resources Month. And move, move the proclamation? Or do I need to move the, move to proclaim that May 2021 is Historic Preservation Month?
That's good to be helpful, Dan.
Okay. All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And thank you for the term limits. I was ready to take a break. It's a good idea, and I'm really pleased with David, can't remember his last name, Mandel or something like that. He took my place, so very good hands. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, bye.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing, which will begin at 11:00. We have just a couple of minutes before then. The public hearing, regarding the supplemental budget number 21101, and Jen Ambul is going to be the person presenting that matter.
While we have a couple of minutes.
Perhaps we can go to the other item, which is the rural broadband issue. That will carry the agenda forward through, through the 11 o'clock hour, into the 11 o'clock hour.
Sure. The rural broadband issue, there are two components to that. One is approval of the IGA with the other counties so that we can receive the services of a contractor to do the engineering assessment for broadband planning purposes. And Vance will be presenting that. Why don't you go ahead, Vance?
Sure. That's a pretty straightforward request. There is an IGA that I sent out to all of you this morning. It's been in the hopper, so to speak, for probably, oh gosh, we might be thinking six months now. It's been quite a while. The idea is that grant money is available to allow a study or research to be performed to determine the extent of the need for the broadband to be extended into the rural communities, and how much it might cost, and where that infrastructure might be located. Lincoln County is the, will be the fiscal agent for this grant. Benton County and Lynn County and Lane Council of Governments will all contribute some money to this, to this venture, but the project will benefit all three counties, and it's been, I think, yes, all four. I keep, I keep thinking the county councils, but we have Lane in there as well, Lane Council of Government. So we benefit the four counties, and I think it's been endorsed and pushed by the, the governments for, well, as long as this project has, has been on the board, so six months. So the request before you is to approve the IGA and authorize the Benton County Board of Commissioners Chair to sign the IGA on behalf of Benton County.
Are there any questions for Vance?
Yes. What is the timeline on having to have this signed and submitted?
There is no timeline per se, but Lincoln County has already signed off on it, and it just came out in email to us yesterday from Wayne Belmont, the county council for Lincoln County. So I believe the sooner the better. That would allow the money to be transferred so that the project could actually begin. So how about if I say this soon?
As soon as possible, ideally, because we really would like to have this engineering feasibility study done. There's a lot of broadband money available for implementation, but without having a good sense for priority projects or for even the engineering feasibility of some of these projects, it's going to be very difficult to spend broadband money that's available. So we are eager to have the analyses done, and particularly excited about the fact that it's four county area, because that means that we won't end up omitting some of these little pockets that tend to bulge through the cracks that are on the boundaries of our counties.
The reason I ask is just because the email being sent at 8:30, 2:00 a.m., about a half hour before this meeting, I have not had a chance to read it. And I'm not, you know, I don't make a habit of approving things that I haven't read, so I'm just curious if we can push it to the next meeting or what, what the options are.
To Towne, I have to use. I thought it would be a good time to put it forward simply because you're considering another broadband thing, but if you don't feel as if this is something you want to approve, then perhaps your other commissioners will agree and push it, push it forward to another meeting.
I suspect a week's delay won't hurt. My preference would be to move it today, but we don't have to move it today. We could hold it over for another week. I do want to discuss the other matter, however. The Commissioner alone.
Yeah, we've been talking about this project for, like Vance said, at least six months. I'm fairly familiar with, with the project and would be willing to make a motion to approve IGA today.
And basically, what this IGA does is it just allows Lincoln County to serve as the fiscal agent for this economic development administration grant. It's not, it doesn't grant them any authority beyond that.
Sure. You know, I'm 99% sure that I would, you know, approve it if I had read it, just haven't had the chance to read it. So Pat, was that an official motion, or were you just saying that you would make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve Benton County signing four county IGA of broadband agreement.
And to authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the county?
Yes. I couldn't have said it better myself, Vance.
I thought you said that under your breath. I just couldn't hear it.
Well, I can exercise my prerogative to second it, and we'll do so. So.
I'll just mention that, yes, thank you. Really, it's just out of principle that I will vote no, but that I do support broadband in this, this project. Just out of principle, not having read it, I will vote no.
Understandable. Thank you. Having been involved in this project for the six months, I'm more comfortable with it. So all in favor, signify with an aye.
On it.
Aye. And, sorry, Nancy, you are voting no in this case, correct? No.
Yes, no.
Okay, well, thank you for that. The other item is a letter which was drafted by Rachel Matic Hughes from Sequoia Consulting in her role, working as the lead on this project with Lincoln, Lane, and Lynn Counties in the broadband action team, and also in coordination with other broadband action teams around the state to support the governor's recommended budget and provide some additional targeted funds. and provide some additional targeted funds from this state biennial budget that's upcoming to continue to plan and provide technical assistance to address the digital divide. And so it includes advocacy for planning and technical assistance grants, digital inclusion grants, library modernization grants, and broadband project grants. So this letter would go to the Ways and Means Committee. They are having their traveling road show. It's not that we're traveling this time. It's all virtual on the Ways and Means portion of the budget, the capital budget. And they would like us to submit this letter of support because it addresses the core state funding that would come to us for project implementation. So as you can see from the draft letter that was in the calendar, it is over all three of our signatures, and that would be the preferred mode of the letter. I am going to be testifying at that particular hearing on another topic. I will be testifying with respect to the courthouse bonding funds, the state matching funds for our new courthouse. And I would really welcome having one of you testify at that hearing and submit the written testimony on our behalf. The hearing is on Thursday. I believe it's from 5:30 to 7:00.
I would be willing to do that. I think like Thursday's... Yeah, that'll work.
Okay, excellent.
At some point, I'll leave the details on contact and what I'm supposed to do, I guess, but...
I will put you in touch with Rachel, and she can provide you all of that information. I may have it. If I don't, we'll loop you in. That would be great. Thank you. Is there any discussion about the letter itself?
I think the letter is good. The only thing I would point out is that under number two, digital inclusion grants, plus $10 million, it reads COVID-19 as demonstrate how differently I think that's supposed to be, has demonstrated. So philosophy there, it looks like.
I will correct that. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, with that, I would take a motion to approve the letter and have Commissioner Malone testify on our behalf to the Ways and Means Committee.
I would move to approve the letter to the Joint Committee on Ways and Means for a million from...
Second. All in favor, signify with an aye. 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 Okay, thank you. We have taken care of that item. We will have one more item after the public hearing, and that will be the TPEP letter. But right now, we will turn to Jen Ambul and our public hearing on budget amendment. Jen?
Good. Still morning. Had to check there for a moment, commissioners. I am here again today to bring forth Supplemental Budget 21-101. That includes changes to seven funds. You are all familiar with these, so hopefully there won't be any additional questions, and we can get through it fairly quickly for you. The first one is the general fund, where the net appropriation increase is $5,085,000. And that is broken down in the following ways. The general government operations, the requested increase is the $5 million. The funding source for that increase was FEMA funding that the county is receiving. And the purpose of increasing appropriations would be for unanticipated COVID pandemic expenses. In the public safety program operations, we are requesting to decrease $384,686. That decrease will allow us to create a transfer account to move that appropriation authority to the Adult Drug Treatment Court in the Benton County Behavioral Health Program. Next would be the community service operations. We are requesting an increase of $85,000. The funding source was a COVID fund for a small business emergency grant program. And the increase to appropriations would be an increase to payment to other governments to pay back unawarded grant funds that were then redeployed into additional grant cycle. And then lastly, in the general fund, we are increasing the transfers to other funds. That's $384,686. And that will allow us to transfer that appropriation authority for the Adult Drug Treatment Court over to Benton County Behavioral Health Program. Next up would be the Local Option Levy Fund. The net appropriation increase is a small one of $5,900. The funding source for this appropriation would be increased tax interest received in the fund. And the increase to the appropriation is the result of paying out some refunds on tax interest on large appeals. The third fund would be the Employee Benefit Trust Fund. This is a net appropriation increase of $0. We are just asking you to reclassify the appropriation authority. The goal is to increase appropriations in general government operations, And that is due to claims expenses that are increased in our medical self-insurance claims. And then consequently, we're asking to decrease contingency, $3,600,000. We are moving the funds out of contingency to offset the increased medical claims, as mentioned. The next fund is the Intergovernmental Services Fund. We are requesting a net appropriation increase of $175,344. That increase is within the general government operations. We had a larger-than-anticipated beginning balance for information technology. And this will allow us to increase the equipment purchase appropriations. There were planned equipment purchases that were approved in the capital improvement plan this biennium, but were unfortunately left out of the budget in error. So this is just correcting that issue. The trust fund, we are asking for a net appropriation increase of $98,000. Within the cultural and educational operations, the Benton County Cultural Trust did receive COVID funding, and then consequently, we're paying out grants to other agencies. The tax title and land fund, we are requesting a net appropriation increase of $300,000. Within the trust operations, there were unanticipated costs for the senior deferral payout on the Blodgett property. And we did add a little room in case there were any other additional unanticipated expenditures prior to this biennium. And the last fund would be the Benton Health Center Fund, where the appropriations would be increased. The $384,686 that was coming from the general fund, that would be to set up the Adult Drug Treatment Court within the Health Center Fund. And those, as I said, were... The program expenditures were previously held in the general fund, and we're just requesting to move them to their new home. Overall, we are requesting a net appropriation increase of $648,930. Of that, operations does increase $9,264,244. Transfer expenses increases $384,686. And our contingency would decrease by $3,600,000.
Thank you, Jen. Are there any questions for Jen about this proposed budget amendment? Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none. We will close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion to approve the supplemental budget.
Just to clarify, this is the meeting motion. We've already done the work session motion?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I would move to adopt the resolution in the matter of Supplemental Budget Number 21-101.
All in favor, signify with an aye. 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 Okay, thank you. Jen, do we expect to have one more supplemental budget before the year's out?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Okay. Tidying up those last elements.
Last-minute items. We also have to establish the appropriation authority for the new fund.
Yes, that's right. Okay, that's wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we will now return to our other, other item. The other, other item is a letter of support for the Tobacco Prevention and Education Program efforts, which is a requirement to go along with the grant renewal for this TPEP grant to Oregon Health Authority. Have you had an opportunity to read it? Do you have any questions? Okay. I would entertain a motion to support... It's in the middle of said letter. Move to approve it. You're muted, Pat.
I will second that.
Now we can't hear you, Vance.
Okay, all in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. My finger hovers over this button, and you know, I sometimes just push it. Okay.
Same.
Thank you very much. With that, our business meeting is concluded, unless there's other dangling business. But we do have another meeting following this one. We have our 911 County Service District meeting. So I will adjourn this business meeting at this time, and we will shift over to the other meeting on the same channel. Don't leave. I will now open the meeting of the 911 Emergency Communications Services County Service District Governing Board. The first item on this agenda is to hear any comments from the public. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none. We will move on to the consent calendar, which includes approval of the January 5th, 2021 meeting minutes. Are there any corrections or amendments to the minutes? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar for the January 5th, 2021 minutes.
Second. All in favor, signify with an aye. Aye. Aye, thank you. Next, we have a public hearing in the matter of a supplemental budget, 21-102, amending the 911 Emergency Communications Services County Service at Fiscal Year 2021 budget. And it's Jen again. Welcome.
Welcome. Good morning still. Vance, could you guys have picked a longer name for the 911 Service District?
You know, I'm sorry. The way the statute requires these to be named, it gets tedious. My bad. I'm sorry.
Ooh, it's a mouthful. I'm not going to lie. I have to remember that when I'm typing it out, too. All right. This is a very, very quick cleanup issue. The 911 Service District Fund, I will abbreviate it in this case, does need a supplemental budget to increase appropriations, $350,000. Tax revenue did come in higher than what was anticipated. And per our IGA, if there is revenue that exceeds the budgeted amount by more than $100,000, it requires a supplemental budget to increase appropriation authority that I happened to discover one day while reading the IGA. So that was a good thing. So we are here to ask for that increase of $350,000.
Are there any questions for Jen? Okay, hearing none. I would like to hear whether there are any comments from the public. Seeing no unfamiliar names on the list of people with us and hearing no voices, I will then close the public hearing and ask for a motion to approve this supplemental budget.
I'll move to adopt the resolution in the matter of Supplemental Budget Number 21-102.
Second. All in favor, signify with an aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much. The meeting of the 911 County Service District, abbreviated, is now adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon, everyone.
And you all as well. Bye-bye.